Pascal's law of Macho-Meter To measure the pressure, to measure the pressure of gas, gas the pressure is Pressure of gas H2 P1 P2, pressure of gas is equal to P1, P1 the pressure is Pressure of gas, so P2 the pressure is Rho G H, Rho G H is P0 P is equal to P0, atmospheric pressure plus Rho G H P gas minus P0 is equal to Rho G H, Pascal's law Enclosed fluid, Pascal's law enclosed fluid Whenever external pressure is applied on any part of fluid contained in a vessel, it is transmitted undiminished and equally in all directions throughout the fluid. If excess pressure is given from one end, it is equally distributed throughout the fluid and liquid in all three vessels rise to same height H. Hydraulic lift, hydraulic lift is F1 P1, F1 by A1 is equal to F2 by A2 F2 Velocity ratio is diameter 1 upon diameter 2, mechanical advantage load upon effort is equal to F2 by F1 Load upon F1 P1 and H height is equal to F2 by A2 H2, H2 upper, mechanical advantage is equal to load upon effort Load is F2 and effort is F1 Velocity ratio diameter 1 upon diameter 2, this diameter upon, this diameter velocity ratio is If X goes down, if X goes down H1 then Y goes up H2, H2 is less than H1 Volume of fluid is constant, even H1 is equal to A2 H2, volume of fluid is constant Even H1 is equal to A2 H2, two pistons of hydraulic machine have diameters 20 centimeter and 2 centimeter Find the Two pistons of hydraulic machine have diameters The force exerted on the larger piston when the force exerted on the larger piston 50 kg weight Is placed on the smaller piston F1 by A1 When the smaller piston moves is through 50 centimeter By what distance the other piston moves out? F2 F1 by A1 F2 by A2 50 kg weight is 50 Newton Area by R square 50g it has to be 10 By R square, F2 is equal to 5 It is 100 and it is 100 It is 100 1 2 3 4 5 into 10 is equal to F2 F2 Then we have H1 H1 is equal to A2 H2, even H1 By what distance the smaller piston moves through 50 centimeter Even H1 is equal to A2 H2, how to do it? Area 1 by R square, 5 R square is H1 is equal to by R square is The radius is Second one is 10 Yes it is 20 centimeter, so radius is 10 centimeter right? By R square into H1 50 centimeter, oh 50 by 100 is equal to H2 Point 5 Applast buoyancy, applast is equal to Vf RfG, volume of fluid Vf is what? Volume dispersed, how much volume dispersed? Volume of substance submerged or volume dispersed, Rf is density of fluid Archimedes' principle defined applast is equal to Vf RfG When a body is most wholly or partially in a fluid, it is lifted up by a force equal to the weight of fluid displaced by the body Vf RfG When a body is most wholly or partially in a fluid, it is lifted up by a force equal to the weight of the fluid displaced by the body Applast is equal to weight of, weight of fluid displaced by body Applast is equal to weight of fluid displaced, M fluid displaced into G U is equal to Rf into volume of fluid displaced into G, volume of fluid displaced A stone of density 3000 KG per cubic meter is submerged in water, if the mass of stone is 30 kg Mass is 30 kg, find applast, a stone of density is submerged in water, density is In water Find you applast, density of water is 13.6 gram Density of water The water is 13.6 Yeah, that is mercury length, 1 gram per cubic centimeter By thousand carlo Rho G H Uh Vf RgV volume Volume is equal to mass upon density, a volume is submerged 10 power minus 4 100 Newton Volume of stone, volume of fluid displaced is equal to volume of stone Mass upon density which is coming as 1 by 100 Applast is equal to Vf RfG 1 upon 100 into density is 1000, density of water is 1000 For another gram should be Another 10 gram should be Then we have an iron cube of mass 5 kg inside 10 centimeter suspended by a thread in water An iron cube of mass We have apparent weight of body, weight Apparent weight of body, when a body is wholly immersed in a fluid, its effective weight decreases Applast force, force, upward tension of the force plus applast is equal to weight Apparent weight is equal to weight in air minus applast Apparent weight is equal to mg minus Vf RfG Apparent weight is equal to mg 1 minus Rf by RfS W apparent weight in air 1 minus Rf by RfS RfS is equal to weight in air upon weight in air minus weight in fluid into Rho fluid, relative density of solid is weight in air upon weight in air minus weight in fluid into relative density of fluid Relative density of fluid A piece of steel has weight in air W1 When completely immersed in water A piece of steel has a weight W in air, W1 completely immersed in water and W2 completely immersed in an unknown liquid The relative density of the liquid is W minus W2 upon W minus W1 Density of solid, W upon W minus W1 Rho W And W upon W minus W2 into Rho N In liquid, relative density related to liquid Condition for sinking is RfS is more than density of fluid Density of solid is more than density of fluid, mass of solid RfS Vs Applast is Vf RfG, Vf decreases, applast decreases W is more than U, Vf is more, U is more still W is more than U Volume maximum, applast maximum, W is more than U sink Then sink will happen, body will sink when density of solid is more than density of fluid Rho 1, R2, R3, it is the highest density of fluid Loss of flotation, body will float if density of, if density of fluid is more than density of solid Float Float will happen when F net is equal to zero equilibrium Applast is equal to weight, Vf RfG is equal to mg So Vf RfG is equal to Vs Rf, condition for flotation, fluid's density is higher than density of solid Vf volume of fluid displaced and Vs total volume of solid For cylindrical or cubical body, HF Rf is equal to HF Rf, then it will float HF height of fluid displaced and total height of solid Flotation, Vf Rf is equal to Vs Rf, full, uh, full volume of solid Volume of fluid displaced, full volume of solid, Vf Rf is equal to Vs Rf HF Rf is equal to HF Rf, V1 R1 plus V2 R2 is equal to Vs Rf H1 R1 plus H2 R2 is equal to HF Rf, HF Rf Limiting condition for flotation Limiting condition for flotation is that density of solid is more than It is 100% sink will happen, but limiting, both of them are density, comparable is Or equal Vf Rf is equal to Vs Rf, cylindrical or cubical body HF Rf is equal to HF Rf, fluid dynamics, steady flow, streamline flow, laminar flow At different points velocities of fluid particles can be different, but velocities at given point is constant with time Low velocity, smooth flow But velocity at a given point is constant with time The path followed by a fluid particle in steady flow is called streamline Velocity of fluid particle at any point of the streamline is along tangent to the curve at that point The flow of the fluid is said to be steady, if at any given point the velocity of each passing fluid particle remains constant in time The flow of the fluid is said to be steady, if at any given point the velocity of each passing fluid particle remains constant in time V1 constant, V2 constant, this does not mean that velocity at different points is same The velocity of particular particle may change as it moves from one point to another That is at some other point the particle may have a different velocity, but every other particle which passes the second point Is exactly as the previous particle that has just passed from the point, properties of streamline flow In streamline flow no two streamliners can cross each other If they do so the particles of the liquid at the point of intersection will have two different directions for their flow Which will decrease the steady nature of the liquid flow The greater is the crowding of streamlines at a place greater is the velocity of the liquid particles at that place and vice versa Streamline flow is possible only if the liquid velocity does not exceed a limiting value called critical velocity Steady flow is achieved at low flow speeds beyond a limiting value called critical speed, the flow loses Steadiness and becomes turbulent Turbulent flow In rivers and canals high speed where velocity of water is high Or boundary surface causes abrupt changes in velocity of flow Then flow becomes irregular, such flow of liquid is known as turbulent flow Thus the flow of liquid in which velocity of all particles crossing a given point is not same And the motion of the fluid becomes irregular or disordered, this is called turbulent flow Reynolds number Turbulent flow high speed, we have Reynolds number Should be done, a stone of density, an iron cube of mass 5 kg And side 10 centimeter Iron cube Of mass 5 kg inside 10 centimeter Is suspended by a thread in water Suspended by a thread in water, find the tension in the thread Find the tension in the thread, tension plus applast Is equal to mg Tension plus find the tension, T is equal to mg minus u M is 5 into 10 minus volume of fluid Which is 1000, volume of fluid is 1000 40 Newton, a stone of relative density K is released from rest on the surface of lake A stone of relative density K is released from Are you A stone of relative density K is released from rest on the surface of lake If viscous effects are ignored, the stone sinks in water with an acceleration of A stone of relative density K Is released from rest on the surface of lake A stone of den or stone of relative density K Is really his to which is equal to density of stone upon density of water From rest on the surface of lake, if viscous effects are ignored The stone sinks in water with an acceleration of Density of stone Applast will happen, mg will happen, how much will go down? mg minus A is Is equal to applast Vf RfG Mass is equal to Density of water Mass is equal to Rf Vs G minus A will happen G minus A Volume of fluid And volume this will be cancelled Density of solid K is equal to G upon G minus A So it will be, we have to calculate acceleration right? So G minus K G minus K A is equal to G K A is equal to K G minus G, K A is equal to Hmm hmm hmm, G 1 minus K Sorry K minus 1 upon K G 1 minus 1 by K Stone of density 3000 kg per cubic meter is lying submerged Stone of density, it is lying submerged in water, density of water is 1000 kg per cubic meter, if mass of stone is 150 kg, calculate the force required to lift the stone If mass of stone in air is 150 kg, calculate the force required to lift the stone Meaning the applast We have to calculate the applast A stone is submerged in water Stone is submerged in water Force required upon applast, mg force plus u is equal to mg S is equal to Vs RfG No, Vf Volume of Fluid dispersed is We can say mg 150 into 10 minus volume of solid Volume of solid, density of solid mg. Solid volume is. mg toh mil gaya, minus volume of solid into. mg is related to. mg is related to this. Apprust is related to fluid. Volume of fluid and density of fluid. O. mg one minus rho s upon rho s. mg is equal to one fifty, one minus rho s three thousand upon thousand. Is equal to one fifty, F of Rho F formula. A piece of steel has weight in air W one. When completely immersed in water and W two when completely. Why is it coming in one fifty? rho s. Upon rho s. Minus one by three. Fifteen hundred into thousand. Two by three. Two five seven fifteen. Thousand Newton. A piece of steel has weight in air. Weight in air is W one, W when completely immersed in water. Weight in fluid is W one and W two. When unknown liquid, W in liquid. Specific gravity, relative density. Of relative density of liquid. Piece of, relative density of steel is equal to. Weight in air upon weight in air minus weight in. Into density of fluid. Relative density of steel. Is equal to weight upon weight in air minus weight in liquid into density of liquid. We have to calculate, the relative density specific gravity of liquid is. W upon W minus W one. Into rho f is equal to W upon W minus W two. Into rho, we have to calculate relative density of liquid. Relative density. Of liquid is. This is relative density of liquid upon relative density of water. Yeah, so good. Condition for sinking. Mass of solid m is equal to rho s into v s. You turn this condition of sinking. An ice cube of density, an ice cube. Density of ice cube is equal to. Nine hundred is floating, density of water is thousand. Percentage of volume of ice cube outside the water is. FiF upon rho f. Volume of fluid displaced. We have to calculate. Percentage of ice cube. Percentage of ice cube outside the water. Volume, total volume minus volume or. Fluid dispersed. This is volume of solid inside the fluid. And this is volume of. FiS, acha FiS is total volume of solid. FiS is total volume of solid. Minus FiF. Upon FiS. Into hundred. We have to calculate this. FiS rho s is equal to FiF. For rho s. So we will write. FiS upon FiF is equal to rho s upon rho s. Minus one kar diya. Move back again. FiS is total. To calculate percentage of. Volume of ice cube outside water. Diffated by. FiS upon FiF is equal to nine hundred, sorry thousand upon nine hundred. Ten by nine. Ten percent. A body floats in water with forty percent of its. A body floats in water with forty percent of its volume outside water. When the same body floats in oil, sixty percent. Water. Remains outside. The relative density of oil is. FiS upon FiF is equal to. rho f. Upon rho s. FiS upon FiS. Rho. Dekho pele hai volume of solid. Upon. Volume of water. Density of water upon density of solid. Then FiS upon. Okay. Here we can do. Relative density of oil is. Relative density of oil is. Density in air. Density of oil and density of water. Volume of oil upon. Volume of water is equal to. Density of water upon density of oil. Volume of steel. Eight minute. Volume bahar kitna hai zero point four. Toh volume under kitna hoga? FiS. One point five, a rhythm. A boat having length of three meter. The boat has. It's floating on a lake, the boat sinks by one centimeter when a man gets on it. The mass of the man is. Length is three meter. Thrust is equal to weight. Apprust kena hai uf, rho f g. Weight kitna hai? mg. One centimeter. We have to calculate the mass of the man. Volume of fluid, it goes in one centimeter. And this is two centimeter. Volume kena hoga. Thirty two over six. Meter star. Thirty two over six into density of fluid is thousand. Into ten by thousand. Sixty. Six by hundred. A tank contains water on top of mercury. Mercury, and this is water. A cubical block of side. Ten centimeter is an equilibrium inside the tank, the depth of the block inside mercury is. Depth of block inside mercury is, it is an equilibrium. Iska thrust is equal to, iska thrust. Water. Ten centimeter. Toh iske under kitna hai X. H one rho one. H two rho two. H one kitna hai X. Density of mercury is thirteen point six. Thirteen point six, H two kitna hai, ten minus X. By one. So thirteen point six. X plus X is equal to ten. Fourteen point six, X is equal to ten. X is equal to hundred by one forty six. Apprust of water, the subthrust of mercury. Or niche kya lag raha hai mg? Apprust of water kitna hai? Volume of water displaced. Density of water mg. Plus volume of mercury displaced. Density of mercury mg is equal to mg. Volume of water displaced is. Ten. Ten. Hundred into. Ten minus X. Into one. Plus. Mass. We have to calculate. Inside the block. Volume of mercury hundred and two X. And density is thirteen point six. And mass of block is. Density of block. Into volume of block. Ten 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 thousand. Thousand minus hundred X. Plus hundred X. Into thirteen point six. We have been given density of. Relative density of block. Density of block upon density of water is equal to eight point five six. In density of mercury. That is okay, relative density of block. Is eight point five six. Eight five six zero. One three six zero X. Thousand minus hundred X. Kena hoga two three six zero, oh oh. Thousand. Plus, one minus ketao. One two six zero. Two three zero six. Sixty three. Ten centimeter is very grand stuff, ten. Three seventy eight by sixty three. Six five zero thirty. Thirty one, six six zero thirty six. Two, six. Six centimeter. Floatation FiF rho s is equal to FiS rho s. Metallic sphere floats in immiscible mixture of water. A metallic sphere floats in immiscible mixture of water. And density of liquid is. Such that a metallic sphere floats in immiscible mixture of water under liquid. Liquid and this is water. Such that it is two third part is in water. And one third part is in liquid. V by three and two V by three. The density of metal is. Density of metal. Volume of water into density of water into G plus volume of liquid density of liquid into G is equal to. And the thrust is equal to the M G. Density of. Ball. Density of metal. Volume of metal into. Volume of water. Two V by three. Density of metal. This is volume of metal. Is B. Eight nine ten. Ten power four into three is equal to density of metal. The non-mixing liquids of density. The two non-mixing liquids of density. Row and. N row. Two non-mixing liquids. Two non-mixing liquids of densities. Row. And N row are put in a container, the height of each liquid. Is H. A solid cylinder of length N density D is put in this container. D. And the cylinder floats with its axis vertical and length. Row L. P L. In the denser liquid. So this is. Density is. Now thrust is. Height into density. H of P. D. Limiting condition for floating. Turbulent flow is. Turbulent flow high speed. In rivers and canals where velocity of water is high or boundary surface. Cause abrupt change in volume of flow, then flow become irregular. Turbulent flow is high speed in rivers and canals where velocity of water is high or boundary surfaces. Cause abrupt change in velocity of fluid, then flow becomes irregular. Such flow of liquid is known as turbulent flow. Thus the flow of liquid in which velocity of all particles crossing a given point is not same. The motion of the fluid becomes irregular or disordered, this is called turbulent flow. Bernoulli's number. R is equal to rho V D by eta, eta is coefficient of viscosity. It is coefficient of viscosity. R is less than thousand steady or stream line, R is more than thousand turbulent, in between it is unsteady. Coefficient of viscosity eta, velocity, density, diameter is the equation of continuity and incompressible density is same. Fluid, mass of fluid entering per second is equal to mass of fluid leaving per second. Density or velocity getting, volume getting in and density into volume getting out. So V one V one is equal to A two V two. Area into velocity. Volume coming in is area into diameter into V. Velocity. Speed. A one V one is equal to A two V two. Equation of continuity, incompressible fluid, it means density is same. Volume in second. A D is equal to A V, so for compressible fluid, if density is different than rho one A one V one. Is equal to rho two A two V two. This is pretty great. Volume rate of flow Q is equal to D volume upon D T, area into velocity. Water is flowing through two horizontal pipes. Water is flowing through two horizontal pipes of different diameters, they are together, the diameters of the two pipes are. If the speed of the water in the narrow tube is. Four meters per second. When the speed of water in the wider tube is, A one V one is equal to A two V two, area by R square. Fifteen by hundred into fifteen by hundred. Into four, A one V one is equal to A two V two by R square. Three five seven, three five seven, five twenty. Four five seven, five seven five, five seven five one. In an incompressible liquid is flowing through a horizontal pipe, the speed V is. An incompressible liquid is flowing through a horizontal pipe. And it is flowing through horizontal pipe, the speed is V. The speed V is eight meters per second, now it is going to be. Area A. In eight A is equal to zero point eight A into six plus three A V. A A A, eight is equal to six of fifty eight, plus three V, it is now three point two. A cylindrical tube of a spray pump has radius R. A cylindrical tube of a spray pump. Cylindrical tube, spray pump of radius R. One end of which has fine holes, each of radius smaller. If the speed of the liquid in the tube is V. The speed of ejection of liquid obviously are. V R upon. Number N. Bernoulli's principle conservation of energy, we now suppose that. An incompressible intensity is same, non visco sand, irrotational fluid is flowing through the pipe in a steady flow. Equation of continuity is A one V one is equal to A two V two. Bernoulli's principle. Bernoulli's principle is. P one plus half rho V one square plus. Rho G H. Rho G H one is equal to P two half rho V two square plus rho G H two. P is, this is pressure, half rho V square plus rho G H is a constant, this is pressure. Pressure energy per unit volume. All of them are divided, pressure upon volume, pressure head, half rho V square upon volume. Rho G H per unit, this is potential energy per unit volume, kinetic energy per unit volume, this is pressure energy per unit volume for an annual to get understudy. W upon delta V is equal to, W what is P delta V, and delta V answer is P. Total energy volume is constant, different heads, pressure upon rho G is pressure head. Half rho V square upon rho V and V square upon two G what is? Velocity head, rho G H and rho is. This H is potential head, all heads have dimensions of length. Velocity headed places twenty centimeter find V, velocity head is. Twenty centimeter find V two two zero four V. Two. Centimeter. For fluid at rest, P one rho G H one, because velocity is not. It is velocity, the term is taken on both sides. In horizontal pipe, H is same, H is the same, rho G H is the same, the term is taken off. Tap question is. That A one V one is equal to A two V two and V two square is equal to V one square plus rho G H. A non visco liquid is flowing through frictionless duct varying cross section area which of the following graph represents a variation of pressure P along axis of T. Here pressure. Velocity减压, pressure is greater. Or velocity is greater, pressure is less. Water is in streamline flow along horizontal pipe with non uniform cross section. At a point in the pipe where the area of cross section is ten cent, ten per centimeter. Area of cross section is ten per centimeter square. Water is in streamline flow along a horizontal pipe with non uniform cross section. At a point in the streamline where the area of cross section is ten per centimeter square, the velocity of water is. One meter per second square, the pressure is two thousand pascal. Water is in streamline flow along a horizontal pipe. With uniform, non uniform cross section, at a point in the pipe where area of cross section is. Area is equal to ten centimeter square. The velocity. Area is. Ten. Velocity is. One meters per second, the pressure is P one is. Two thousand pascals. The pressure at another point by cross sectional area. Is five centimeter square. Is A one V one, ten is equal to, V is now two. So P one plus. Half rho V square, P two plus half rho V square. P one is two thousand. Plus half. Row. Water, density of water is. Thousand. Into V square. Is equal to P two plus half rho. V square. Two two zero four. P two is equal to two thousand. Plus. Five hundred. Plus. Two thousand. How much is? Forty five hundred. Five hundred pascal is. Minus was two thousand, now five hundred is. Five hundred. Water falls from a tap hundred meter.